to rise as we do the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're bowing with me? Dear God, we couldn't be denied. We just thank you, God, that, uh, God, that we're, we're able to be here for another day, God. God, I just pray that we would, uh, God, as we go through this meeting, that we would just give us wisdom. And God, I just pray that you would give us, uh, give us guidance as we go through here and make the decisions for the city of Otoka. And, uh, God, I just, uh, this week, I just pray for families in our community that are hurting. And I just pray, God, that you would comfort them and they would know that it's, that it's you covering them through these time, God. And I just pray, uh, pray for safety as we travel and go to see our families. And I just pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening. Welcome to everyone. Have a nice crowd this evening. This time with the clerk call rule, please.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
Okay, this is the public comment time. This is anything that's not on the posted agenda. You may address the council at this time. Hearing none will move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of November 6th, 2023.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Mr. Delay is not with us this evening. So if anybody has any questions, I may be able to answer them. If not?
I have a question on the police report. They were talking about, um, as the outstanding warrants, a law changing on the outstanding warrants. Y'all know anything about that?
I believe I'll, I will handle that.
Oh, okay.
On November 1st, the state legislature enacted a new law that significantly curtails our ability to collect outstanding fines. Um, we can no longer arrest individuals for failure to pay without first having a cost hearing to determine their ability to pay. If they do not have an ability to pay, um, then we are unable to collect from them, period. And we're also unable to-
So what happens?
Put them in jail.
What in the world?
Okay.
What happens is just that. They get off.
Well, so is there a grandfathering clause? So these, I mean, effective, what happens before November the 1st?
All of our out-
Outstanding warrants?
Yeah, so all of our outstanding warrant warrants, um, after November 1st, if they are a warrant for failure to pay, we treat them as what's called a cost site and release warrant, uh, meaning we can't arrest them. We cite them, uh, with a warning and tell them they need to report to the court clerk within 10 days. Um, if they fail to report to the court clerk within 10 days, at that point, we can issue an arrest warrant for failure to appear, which is different. The problem with it is all of our warrants that we have outstanding do not specify what they're for. It doesn't tell us if they're for failure to pay, failure to appear, or for some other reason. So we can't arrest anyone on any of our outstanding warrants at this point that, that were issued prior to November 1st. We have to give them a cost site and release warrant instead and tell them to check in with the court clerk within 10 days. Um, we can technically do that for, we're technically supposed to do that for anybody we come across who has a warrant for failure to pay, whether they were arrested in Bartlesville or wherever. We're supposed to give them a site and release warrant. The reality is we don't have the infrastructure in place to notify all of these other jurisdictions that we have encountered one of their, uh, warrant individuals in our jurisdiction and we've given them a cost site and release warrant. So we're not going to do that. I've made the decision. We will issue the site and release warrants to individuals that have an outstanding City of Otoka warrant. And the rest of them, we will just tell them, have a nice day. You need to go pay your ticket, basically. That's really our only option.
And how is it going to be assessed if they can't pay? I mean, just because they say they can't pay?
There's an affidavit they have to complete that gives us their financial history.
Okay.
And we have a cost hearing, which the judge will determine based on the information they provide, whether or not they're able to pay. The problem for us is that it is, um, it is assumed if someone is on government assistance that they're unable to pay.
Mm-hmm.
So there's going to be a large majority of citizens that, that get off because they're on government assistance and can't pay. It's definitely something that, in my opinion, the legislature, um, did a terrible job on. Um, it, it hearkens more towards something that California would pass, not Oklahoma. And, um, it, it's something they're going to have to revisit because we really just took away our ability again to enforce-
When was this put in place?
Traffic laws.
November 1st, wasn't it?
November 1st. So in essence, if you are, your only income is social security and you get stopped, the fine means nothing because you're going to be able to not pay it. I, I believe we have some options for filing judgments against them, but, you know, then you're not going to collect that, I mean, in most cases. So-
What was the purpose behind it? Was it supposed to help people?
So the purpose behind it was, and, and I think the legislature is, was correct in that, um, for too long, we, we've created kind of a system of debtors' prison that poor, poor and indigent people get incarcerated more disproportionately than people who have ability to pay their fines just because they get fined and don't have a way to pay it and, and then they go to jail for it. Uh, so I think their motives were, were in the right place. They've just not provided any other avenues for us to punish people for wrongdoing. You know, I, I don't even think the way that it's written, we could, um, sentence them to community service, you know, because it says that you can only use community service if it's determined at a cost hearing they can pay something. Well, that's kind of, if they, if they can pay something, we're gonna arrest them for not paying. So-
So the affidavit, does it come to us or does it go to the state?
It's all handled through municipal court and, and I spent a large portion of, of my billable hours last month preparing for this and, and getting our forms in place and procedures in place to, to cope with it as best we can. Um, no, it's something that they will file with the municipal court clerk and then we will schedule a hearing before Judge Youngblood on their ability to pay.
And are there supporting documents that they have to bring to prove that?
Yeah, they will have to prove it. Um, it's-
Like you said, if, if they're on social security, is that the only, and government assistance?
TANF, WIC, social security, any of those benefits.
Public housing?
Public housing, yeah.
Yeah, none of these people that, you might as well wipe this off. Wipe out everything you've got because you're just gonna waste your time.
Yep.
And start over.
So one other thing, and the other thing the law specifically says is we cannot, um, take into consideration their ability to pay when sentencing them. I mean, I would be under the impression, well, if you can't pay, we'll let you set three or four days out in jail, you know, uh, as punishment. But we're not allowed to consider their ability to pay. We would have to do that with everybody, you know. So, I don't know. It's uncharted territory. It's not, uh, our officers are not happy. I'm not happy. Judge isn't happy. Um, and, you know, remains to be seen what effect it will ultimately have on, on crime and punishment, but-
These are just minor things though, too, right? It's not like big stuff. It's just tickets.
Well, it's across the board. I mean, it applies at district court as well. So, uh, even if it were, you know, you know, assault and battery with a deadly weapon, you know, if they didn't get jail time and just got a fine and, and wasn't able to pay the fine and was on government assistance, well, tough.
How did this pass and no one talk about it until this?
I don't know. I, I learned about it for the first time about three months ago at a municipal attorney's training conference and my head exploded and we-
Yeah, I didn't understand it when I read. I thought, truly, this is not what I'm reading, but I guess it is.
It is. Yeah.
It was free running.
We're, we're getting progressively closer and closer, in my opinion.
So any warrants are issued just because they didn't pay fines, but not for like a warrant is issued for anything else? It's the fines.
Correct. So what we're doing, just, you know, and this falls with, within the report. So I don't think we're running afoul of the Open Meetings Act, um, because we did include it in the report. Um, any, um, what, what we're doing is when they come in for their initial appearance, if they plead guilty or no contest and are fined, at that point, we automatically set them for a cost hearing, um, just shy of 120 days out, uh, which is what the law requires. That way, they're noticed to reappear if they don't have it filed. Otherwise, if we didn't set them and they didn't pay within the, you know, six months that the judge usually gives them, um, then we would have to issue a summons on them and have them served with a summons before we, and have them come back to court. And then if they didn't appear, we would have to, uh, issue a warrant at that point. It's just too much to that for our staff and, and to do that. So we're just setting them automatically. If they can't pay right then and there, they're getting set to reappear in 120 days and we'll reassess. So-
But you said something there with the deadly. That's a felony. I know there's some, there's some that are misdemeanors.
But that would be a district court citation. But yes, if, if they're, say they went to jail for that and got out, but still had fines and they're unable to pay the fines, they're not gonna have to pay them.
Oh, okay.
If they can't prove that they have any-
Correct.
That's not gonna be hard.
Thank you for the explanation.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
And sorry to you guys.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Uh, I recommend approving. I'll second.
Have a motion as second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting payment of purchase orders for the city of Otoka for the month of October 2023.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action regarding payment of invoice number 19966-10 in the amount of $16,000 to Lochner for the Otoka Municipal Airport Site Selection and Planning Study as part of the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Grant Number AQR-22-S contingent on approval and remittance of funds payable to the city of Otoka in the amount of $15,200 from the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Drawdown. This attachment number four. Is there any questions on this? Again, this is like we've done in the past on other payment applications and for the design.
It's 16,000, right?
Uh, yes, but our part, our party's-
It's 15.
No.
I'm sorry.
Our part's 800.
800, okay. I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. Rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion and/or action regarding payment of invoice number 119966-11 in the amount of $20,000 to Lochner for the Otoka Municipal Airport Site Selection Planning Study as part of the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Grant Number AQR-22-S contingent on approval and remittance of funds payable to the city of Otoka in the amount of $19,000 from the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Drawdown.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and/or action regarding approving or denying the city mayor to sign and execute the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Drawdown Number Nine for the Otoka Municipal Site Selection Planning Study Project AQR-22-S in the amount of $34,200 for invoice numbers 10 and 11.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number seven, discussion and/or action regarding approving or denying the purchase of two 2024 Dodge Durangos for the Otoka Police Department from John Vance Motors, Inc. in the amount of $90,260- in the amount of ninety thousand two sixty for both at state contract pricing. And I think the money's in the budget for this. They, the cars wouldn't arrive until next year if there's a very long lead time. And if we're not in the queue early enough, it really stretches it out, so.
Yep, wait eighteen months on a vehicle off state contract, so.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second real call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
It's a long time to wait, though. Hopefully they're waiting a long.
Yeah, hopefully it's not that long. You guys, you guys put a lot of miles on those things in a hurry. They run twenty-four hours a day. Gotta keep you in safe equipment, so. Uh, next item on the agenda is item eight, discussion and/or action on accepting a quick claim deed in dedication of a public street from Pilot Travel Centers LLC and Steve Mansell and Gala Mansell to the city of Etoka for a portion of Red Bud Lane.
As you guys are all aware, we've been dealing with this for quite some time. When Starbucks was coming in, they wanted East Red Bud Lane, well, it's not east, it's Red Bud Lane on the east side of the road, dedicated as a public street, and we were not willing to do so until Pilot repaired the roadway, which they have done. They've, they've repaired the roadway. We've got Pilot's signature and Steven Gale's, so now we just need the city to accept this and sign off on it.
So, they will be east and west, is that what you're saying?
No, we, we decided just to keep it Red Bud Lane. We had discussions a while back at a council meeting of making it East Red Bud, but we decided just to keep the, the same name across the street.
The vote was, because I remember I kinda wanted to change, I don't think I.
Sure.
Yes, come on up.
If you don't change the name to East Red Bud, what would the numbers be? Would you have to look at numbers? If it's just Red Bud and you've got one hundred on west, like, because you can't go negative on the west side?
Last time we, we were here, it was decided just to be Red Bud Lane, and that's how the documents are prepared and signed at this point. If the city does want to revisit that, we can always change the name of the street.
I think we'll have to.
At another council meeting.
Some of the people that live there wanted, you know, that talked to me, wanted it changed.
I'm good with whichever way we need to go with it.
I think we need to.
But for now, we need to accept this and if we wanna revisit changing the name, we can do that.
Because there's no addresses on that side of the street anyways, right? So, that's why I say, until it actually makes a difference.
Just name that west, since that was there, name that west, Red Bud and Levia.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then. I recommend approving. I'll second.
Have a motion, a second real call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number nine, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the design plan submitted by Daniel Family Investments LLC for property on Sixth Street and Section Fifteen Township Two South, Range Eleven East, Etoka County. Good evening, Mr. Daniel. How are you, sir?
How's everybody?
Good.
Carol got us some bigger versions. Give it up for her, she's awesome. She's doing that, but I'm gonna kind of spread it out if that's all right. Only got three, so we may have to share it in section. So, these are pictures of an Alvin as well. Look at the Pogue house inside and outside, that picture's there.
Thank you.
So, the main objective for me was, this looks a lot like the initial preliminary, but it didn't have the correct dimensions. Really, the main objective for me is Phase One, so we can go in and do engineering and dive deeper. Just got this back in survey day. Unless you guys look at those for a minute if it's all right.
Okay, this is on Sixth Street, right?
Yes, ma'am, so Sixth Street runs across the top there on the north side.
On this.
Yeah.
So, it goes all the way back this far, because, okay.
It's approximately twenty acres total.
And this middle section here is just empty right now, or it doesn't belong to us? This.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not a piece, a piece of property. Everything you see within the lots there is the shape of the city's property, that is the whole piece.
Well, that's a funky little piece of property there.
It's like a wall, yeah.
How big are these lots?
So, the man of the city's six thousand square feet, so these range from, one of them, you know, if you have eight thousand plus all the way down to pushing it sixty-one hundred, sixty-two hundred square feet, you just came up. We want a maximum out of the space. Um, and I, I propose Phase One, actually goes down Sixth Street, lots seventy-eight, down from, so seventy-eight to your top left, just one open from the street there, down to eighty-seven, that's the first phase of ten. So, that's our initial objective in having done twenty-four.
So, I, I have one concern. This is the first that I had seen the plat, and I don't think that the, the legal running along Sixth Street is completely accurate because if you guys remember Lot eighty-eight that has the road running through it, we kept part of that property so that we could widen Sixth Street and it narrows down to twenty feet down at Lot One, and I'm not sure that's reflected on this survey, and I'm not sure what that's gonna do to those lot sizes along Sixth Street. So, we probably need to shoot that over to the surveyor and have him throw that on there, just to.
Yeah, and I, I was actually wondering the same thing on Sixth Street. I said I got this at ten thirty this morning, I've been waiting on it for a couple of months. But that was my, you know, I scooted over one lot and just had the initial proposal, the ten in the middle there for Phase One.
And the, the legals on that are in here, and I can show you where those are and we can shoot those over to him to have him throw that on there. Because it runs the whole length, but it just narrows down to twenty feet down at Lot One on the corner, so.
So, are we gonna do anything about the street before anything else, before you start doing anything, Sixth Street?
We.
Danny's been working on some planning and, and design work on the street. It's, we have to come up with a budgetary number.
He, he has hired an engineering firm to engineer Sixth Street for us,
Okay.
uh, which will tell us exactly what our, our easement requirements are gonna be. And I'm not sure where he's at in that process, but I know he's met with the engineers and to determine that.
Yeah, my thoughts on that, too, where we'll meet whatever setbacks are required, you know, we'll be in a base.
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna be in a position where we're limited later on in what we can do with Sixth Street because, I mean, they want sidewalks and, and turning lanes and all of that stuff through there. And I don't, I don't, I wanna make sure we have what we need there, which.
I'd like that be the first thing you do.
I think we're close. I, I mean, I think we are, I think we're close, but the survey doesn't reflect that.
How's it gonna get, there's no way, right?
Well, maybe. Down in the lower right corner there, is that the creek, that, that little gray crook down there?
It has to be somewhere in here.
Lot forty-three.
Lot forty-three?
No, that.
This is Sixth Street.
That's Sixth Street.
Okay. Did we ever decide whether we're gonna have a road coming in from seventh through eighth, all the way down through there?
So, that is the entrance off of Bay, the expectation to go all the way through the school was, I mean, that's a long, long-term plan. I think it's great.
How, how, how close is, are these lots to the school property down close to the creek? Are they gonna run on the creek?
Yeah, this is, so this is the, I guess you'd call it the west border of the property, so they're gonna back up to.
The creek.
This is the north, or the, up here on the east end at the hill.
Okay, how big is your, is this area here?
It's gonna be approximately seven, eight acres. I can get you a more script if I don't have that, because I'll stop that.
What'd you say? Like this road, how, how wide is the road we have to here into the cul-de-sac, because?
It's fifty feet.
It's a fifty-foot road easement, so you're gonna have basically twelve-foot lanes.
Two hundred and thirty-three feet wide there in total.
But you could turn this around, is what I'm thinking. Because your kids down here are gonna have to walk a long ways to get all the way up here.
But that's a standard street. You're not gonna make a cul-de-sac bigger, just, I mean, Walker Edition, we have other cul-de-sacs that are the same.
But what about, what's, is there nothing out here? There's no street?
That's not, that's not our property.
That goes onto other property.
It'd be the same as like Walker, right?
Yeah, I know, it's terrible, or.
But I'm just saying that's.
I know, that's what I mean. Lawrence was terrible, and to those kids at the end, you should walk all the way to the other end.
And I don't know what else you could do there.
My bus is bit down there, but.
Now, that's. Property, so I'm not sure what you could do to resolve that.
Just a curiosity question, that's what I mean.
And, and tonight's main purpose is really to approve the, the design on the houses. The plat will, will have to go before planning and zoning, before it comes back to you guys, so we can't approve that tonight, especially because we need to kind of work through the Sixth Street thing real, real quick, but.
So, you're looking at potentially up to eighty-seven, eighty-eight lots, okay.
But, but the houses, we need, we need to kind of get feedback on that so we can include that with our redevelopment agreement.
Did you have any, anything else to say?
So, you've got, you know, in your book there, you've got all the houses, you've got the preliminary plans. Uh, I just want to get as much approved or feedback as we can get so we know where to go from here. Our goal is to start January first. You know, two weeks from now, but if it's something going, so that totally avoids our whole redevelopment agreement. I just need to know where we need to go, what, what we need to do, and I don't know that much from you guys.
Okay. Well, I recommend approving. If anybody have any more questions?
You have three different floor plans?
There's gonna be like six to seven.
Six to seven.
It's kind of like the Dunbar homes.
So, they won't all be the same, they'll all be different? Will the prices on them run different or?
Approximately price for basically all the brands, it's gonna be about a hundred and eighty thousand. Comes out to about a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a foot, those are my.
They look more like than some of the Dunbar homes and some of the other homes. Some of the Choctaw homes.
Not far from it, I'm gonna break.
Is it the same builder?
Yeah.
J. Mark.
Hear a motion on the floor?
I'll second.
There's a second. Motion, a second real call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
He hasn't moved down. Is there any new business? Any council comments?
I'll second.
Motion, a second, real call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. McGee?
Yeah.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Moving to our next meeting of the evening, the Etoka Municipal Authority, would clerk call real, please?
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
Move down, this is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time.
Once we figure out this and get that on here.
Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of November sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second real call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting payment of purchase orders for the Etoka Municipal Authority for the month of October twenty twenty-three.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second real call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action regarding, regarding approving or denying the purchase of two two thousand twenty-four Ford F-Three fifty trucks for water and sewer departments from John Vance Motors, Inc. in the amount of one oh eight six sixty for both. That, that is combined for both trucks at state contract pricing.
Did we have that budgeted in this one?
Uh, yes, I believe it did.
For this year?
Uh, I can't remember if this year, budgeted in for.
For next year, because it's, I mean, it's almost the end.
It's the ordering, ordering timeframe, same thing on the vehicles.
I'll most approve.
I'll second.
Motion, a second real call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Is there any new business? Trustee comments?
Make a motion, major.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, real call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, so we move into the next meeting of the evening, Etoka City Industrial Development Authority, would you call real, please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
We move down, agenda, this is public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of November sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll most approve.
Motion, a second, real call, please.
Second.
Said November sixth, why were you?
Did you need a second?
Oh.
Yeah, I would. Would you? Now I have a motion, a second. Okay, real call, please.
Which one are we? I thought you said November sixth.
Yeah, that was, it was a typographical on the deal. It's on the, the.
October sixteenth?
November sixth.
Oh, okay.
Is that right?
Yes, it was posted correctly. She.
I'll most approve.
Uh, Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report. Sir, good evening, how are you?
Good evening. We've had another really good month. We've, uh, we are working very closely with the magnesium products on your layouts and, um, access to the property on the northwest corner of our heavy industrial park. We're very excited about that project, and they were also partners on our Jordan Rainer concert. So, we certainly appreciate them putting money into the community already, but we're not even here. Um, Green Lion is progressing rather quickly on their permits. They should be, they should have the rest of their permits very quickly, and then we will be doing an opening out there on their project. They're currently looking for a plant manager.
I forget what this is.
Green Lion is a battery recycling, they can take the old batteries and recycle them into a process that then allows that material to be made into new batteries.
How quickly do you think they'll start doing a hiring event? How quickly do you think they'll do a hiring event?
They probably will not do an entire hiring event because they don't have a whole bunch of employees to start out with.
Okay.
They've got this plant manager position that they're trying to fill rather quickly. I attended the CDFA Council for Development Finance Agency's conference. This is a national conference that's held once a year and helps with my continuing education. But also, it was very good and some of the sessions included new market tax credits and C-Pace funding, and we really need our county commissioners to opt in to C-Pace funding. In Oklahoma, each county must opt in for that funding, and it's for clean energy. So, if you've got a manufacturer that's coming in and they're spending three million dollars on HVAC and energy-saving equipment, they can then get a special assessment. It's basically paid back as a, a low-interest loan off an assessment on the property. But it's, it's very important that our county commissioners opt in to that so that you, so that this is, will entice businesses to come here versus, I think Marshall County is our closest county that also has C-Pace funding. So, it's, it's very important, um, because we're throwing our head in the can at these, at these industries to get on here.
Have you visited with the county commissioner?
Yes, they've received the, um, we have EDC, which is taken, and they, they do the whole thing. They manage everything on it, who sent the agreement and everything, and from what I understand, the district attorney does have the agreement, he's reviewing it.
Okay.
So, hopefully, it will be approved soon. Tourism, we've had a really good month on tourism. We had the Jordan Rainer concert, and it was a lot of fun. And I would just really like to commend our EMS and emergency personnel and our police department. I think anybody who's thought about doing anything changed their mind when they showed up.
Cheers.
And I want to thank Tony Head for his inmates who cleaned up afterwards, but also the citizens of Etoka, there was very little trash. And I want to thank Tony Head for those inmates who cleaned up afterwards, but also the citizens of Etoka that threw in very little trash.
Mm-hmm.
It was, it really, we really shined well on that with the artists. Any questions?
Nope, I don't have any, I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion in second, roll call please.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting the payment of the purchase orders for the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority for the month of October twenty twenty-three.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion in second, roll call please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Let's move down to item five, executive session.
We do not have a need for an executive session this evening, Carol and I got our wires crossed, and I put the wrong matter on here, and we do not need to discuss this matter at this time, so I would ask that you skip, uh, through the executive session and return, and I will try to get the correct matter on the next agenda.
Okay, so just let it die for lack of a.
Yeah.
Anyone want to have an executive session? Item dies. Moving on, new business, any new business from anyone? Any trustee comments? Do you want to hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in second, roll call please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Okay, let's move into our next meeting of the evening, the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority, would clerk call roll please?
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Kathy?
Here.
Again, this is public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda, item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Almost to approve.
So is that the right date? Okay, I'll second.
Have a motion in second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the sports complex manager's report.
So, uh, Destry and Curtis are working hard on getting things accomplished for next year, we're getting some equipment, and, um, Destry is working hard to get the tournaments planned and scheduled, and we are looking at doing our own lead registration instead of going through either PAC or a practice. And so Destry will have a, have more information on that later. But at this time, we just feel that it would be easier for us to do our own.
Do we have an issue with what we were using, or we just want to try it this way?
Define issue.
Well, what are the benefits of this thing, you know?
It was, so our problem was, is almost everybody that registered, Destry had to go back in and manually enter them because they were going into the wrong spots, he was having a fourth tee on a twelve U tee, and, um, it was so encumbrant with nine hundred kids, that it was not worth what we paid them for.
Okay.
Now, uh, he's working out a deal to where, and we will do our own tournaments, our own, uh, and, but he's working out to see what other, um, regional tournaments we can play in if we do our own. But at this point, with the issues with the two organizations that we've used in the past, we just think it would be easier for us to do our own.
And so like with okay kids, you know, there's, there's tournaments after, you know, so we're planning on doing, doing that, too?
He will be able to give us a little more direction of what exactly our plans are, but from what I understand, um, and we've got, you know, we had nine hundred kids this last year, and he's already got teams from Parks, who are signing up to come here and play our games, so, um, he's got a very solid plan, and I will, he'll present it.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion in second, roll call please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting payment of purchase orders for the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority for the month of October twenty twenty-three.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion in second, roll call please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Did you move down, any new business? Any trustee comments?
Make a motion in adjournment.
Here it is, motion in second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Let's move into our last meeting of the evening, the Etoka City Airport Authority Trust, would you call roll please?
Ms. Pogue?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
Again, this is the public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda, item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion in second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding the acknowledgement of payment, payment of invoice number nineteen nine sixty-six dash ten